Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Ferndale City Council meeting for Monday, January 11th, 2016. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. And since this is the inaugural meeting of the 45th Ferndale City Council, we have historically started each new term with an invocation. And I would like to introduce Reverend Jim Poole from Renaissance Vineyard Church here in Ferndale to lead us in the invocation this evening. Reverend?
Thank you very much. I'm humbled to do what I already do on a regular basis, which is pray for you all. So, God, I pray that you'd be with us today. I pray that you would be with this council of women and men, that you would give them grace and wisdom in the discharge of their duties. But I pray that they would have fairness in respecting the wishes and desires of the people that have elected them and which they lead, and that you would give them great sense of justice to bring leadership and goodwill to our city. Lord, help them lead us in being good neighbors, one for another. Bless this council and all its proceedings in the days to come. We pray in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend. Our next item of business is actually to inaugurate three members of the council this evening. And with us is the Honorable Joseph Longo from the 43rd District Court, and also the Honorable Chuck Geddard, also of the 43rd District Court, to do the oath of office for three members starting terms this evening. Marnie, how do we want to start with that? Do you want to start with myself? We'll do them in the order that you have them listed here?
However you'd like.
All right. We'll start with me.
You in a hurry?
I am.
One more time. Raise your right hand. Do you, David Coulter, solemnly swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States, the State of Michigan, and the Charter of the City of Ferndale, and that you faithfully discharge the duties of mayor in and for the City of Ferndale, County of Oakland, State of Michigan, to the best of your ability?
I will.
Congratulations.
And Joe, since you're already there, why don't we have Dan go next? Well, Judge Longo is already there. The next person to be sworn in is Councilman Dan Martin, who was re-elected in November as well.
Raise your hand. Do you, Dan Martin, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Michigan, and the Charter of the City of Ferndale, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of City Councilman in and for the City of Ferndale, County of Oakland, State of Michigan?
I will.
Congratulations.
And now, our newest member, Councilwoman Leex May, will be sworn in by the Honorable Chuck Geddard.
Please raise your right hand. Do you, Bayline Leex May, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of this State of Michigan, the Charter of the City of Ferndale, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of council member in and for the City of Ferndale, County of Oakland, and State of Michigan to the best of your ability?
I will.
Judge Longo, Judge Geddard, thank you very much, as always, for performing those duties. Great to see you both. Thank you. At this time, I would allow for Councilman Martin and Councilwoman Leex May to say just a few words, if you like, as we kick off your new term.
Sure, I'd be happy to. I'm just so grateful for the privilege of being able to serve this community and these people again for the next four years. I couldn't feel stronger about my neighbors, the people that do business here, the people that live, work, and play here, and the privilege to be able to represent them on matters of policy, and really the community that has come to be my home. So, thank you very, very much for the opportunity.
Councilwoman?
Okay. Yeah.
And I just want to thank you all for coming out and witnessing the oath of office, and for my family being out in the audience there. I want to let you all know that I'm looking forward to serving this community. I've had the privilege of serving it in different capacities before, but I'm really looking forward to all the exciting things and all the developmental, just, I'm trying to say, ideas and things that we're going to explore. And I'm looking forward to working with all of you. I'm looking forward to you all being involved, and thank you for being here. Thank you for supporting me. Thank you for getting me into this seat. Thank you.
And I would just add, that's actually the fourth time I've taken the oath of office for mayor. I can't believe it. It has gone by fast. And if you add the four times I took the oath of office representing Ferndale on the county commission, I've been at this awhile, and I continue to be just humbled and grateful for the trust that the community has put in me and this council. It's a responsibility that we all take very seriously. I hope you understand that. And although we don't always, people won't always agree with every decision we make, I know I speak for my councilmen and women when I say that we strive our best every day to do what's in the best interest of our community. So, thank you for your support and your trust, and cheers to another great term on council. Thanks, everybody. So, with that, Marnie, a roll call of the official 45th council would be in order.
Councilmembers Leex May?
Yes.
Here. Councilmember Martin?
Here.
Councilmember Pollocka?
Here.
Councilmember Piana?
Here.
And Mayor Coulter?
Here, thank you. Next item of business would be the approval of the agenda.
I would move that we approve the agenda as presented. Support.
Actually, I have, if I do that here, I have one addition. I'd like to add item to 10D, the Resolution voicing opposition to Public Act 269, formerly known as Senate Bill 571.
I'll accept the amendment.
I'll accept the amendment with support.
Any other comments or changes to the agenda? It's been moved by Martin, supported by Pollocka. Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Martin?
Yes.
Pollocka?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Leex May?
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. The agenda is adopted. Moving on now to our next item of business, which is presentations, and we have a couple of them this evening. The first one is very exciting, the introduction of our new police captain and our police chief. Chief Tim Collins is going to do that introduction, I believe.
I will thank you, Ron. Before we do that, I would like to explain to our friends in the community and our council the position of captain. It's a very important position that has been absent from the police department for the last five years. This is the technical, he will be in the operations commander. He'll be in charge of the entire patrol division. He'll be in charge of budgeting and all that great non-police stuff that others don't see on TV. So, but for us to have the captain's position back in the department, it will be a blessing. We will get a lot of the things that can fall into the cracks in the training world and the administrative world, we believe we'll be putting back online, and we'll be becoming a much stronger police department for that. I'd like to call Captain Palazzolo up, tell you a little bit about him. Vincent Palazzolo is a native of the city of Monroe. He went to Monroe High School. He was a junior in high school. He decided he was going to join the military. So, as a junior, he, in high school, he came and signed up. So, when he graduated from high school, he went into the army. He served as a military policeman until he was, until he got out of the military in 1992. He worked in Texas as a corrections officer for awhile, and then he put himself through the Wayne County Regional Police Academy here back in Michigan. That was in 1995. In 1995, he was hired by the Ferndale Police Department. He worked in the patrol division for several years. He also worked in a crime suppression task force. He is a member of the SWAT team. He ultimately became the SWAT team commander. He joined after September 11th, 2011. He rejoined the military. He left us and went and served in Afghanistan. He is a paratrooper, infantry airborne paratrooper. This guy decided at this age that it would be a good idea to jump out and serve a good airplane. He, when he came back to us, well, also, he was also a Wicked Police Officer of the Year in 1999. It just shows the type of individual that we have. When he came back from Iraq, he had served, he had received a slew of medals and different badges, including the Combat Infantry Badge, Paratroopers Badge, the, it wrote it down here, the Global War on Terrorism Expeditionary Medal, as well as three Army Achievement Badges. He returned to us again in 2005. Within months, he was promoted to the rank of sergeant. He worked in the patrol division until he was again promoted in 2011 to the rank of lieutenant, where he had worked for several years. He still retained the SWAT commander, which is a cooperative, multi-jurisdictional operation, and he still holds that position today until his successor will be named. On January 1st, he was promoted to the rank of captain after a long process of testing, and we believe, I believe very strongly, that we picked the correct man for the job. He will carry us on into the future. Vinny is married to his lovely wife Joanna. He has one son, Dominic, who's eight years old, and I present to you today Captain Vincent Palazzolo.
Captain, any words you'd like to share?
No.
Eric, he covered it. Congratulations, congratulations.
Congratulations. I'm excited and honored to carry on a tradition with the Ferndale Police Department, and I'm excited to work with council and citizens to move this police department into the next chapter of its life.
Excellent. Thank you. Very good. All right. Our next presentation is the Beautification Committee's Holiday Awards. Always a fun, a fun award series that they do, and...
Good evening.
Good evening, and Happy New Year to the council in the city of Ferndale from the Beautification Commission. My name's Robin Yelverson, and I am the chair of the committee. And we wanted to share with you all who we had selected for receiving the Holiday Lights Awards. This is the award, besides the certificate, you know, over the last few years, the Beautification Commission has cranked out a lot of little paper certificates, and that's fine, and they look lovely in a frame. But for the awards ceremony, for Halloween, for the Bootification Awards, and for the Holiday Lights, we decided to do a little something extra special that they could remember it from year to year, and hopefully by placing this in their window, encourage their neighbors to also join in with the lights. So, the tag on the side just simply says, "Thank you for helping light up Ferndale for the season." And this was presented to them when we took the certificates around. The first house here is the home of Bruce and Sherry Eaton on 1716 Pearson. It was quite festive. For those of you who are not aware of how we really do this, the commission gets together every month on the third Thursday of the month, and in this particular third Thursday in December, we did a tour. We have a very active Facebook page. In fact, we've got over 800 fans right now, and it's growing. We've got someone who is really working that page very well, Suzanne Janik over here, who assists me with a lot of the marketing aspects of the commission. And so, we had over 40 homes that were nominated for the award. We divide the city into four quadrants, and then we selected one home from each quadrant. This was the southwest winner. Then we had 340 West Maplehurst. That was the northwest quadrant's winner. Then 475 East Saratoga, Nick and Leanne Nunley are the homeowners there. They were one of the first ones to really get the lights going for the season, and I was really excited. And then it just sort of quietened out for about two weeks, and I began to get a little panicky. But everyone pulled through at the very last minute, and it turned out really great. We're very proud to also say that we tabulated all the scores. It's a 10-point scale that we use, and all of the homes received at least an eight or higher that were the winners. This is the fourth one, 840 East Lewiston. Keith Martin is the resident there. It was very whimsical with all the little dinosaurs and things that you don't normally associate with Christmas time, but we, or the holiday season, and we thought it was a lot of fun. And then, on the commercial side, 1220 East Nine Mile, which is, of course, the office of Garden Fresh Salsa and Gourmet. For those of you who would like to possibly join in with the activities of the Ferndale Commission, we meet every third Thursday at the Ferndale Public Library at 6:30. It is an open meeting, so anyone can attend. Also, follow us on our Facebook page. We'll see you in spring. And speaking of spring, we are starting a new year with four new council members, which brings our commission up to 10 members, which is a great thing considering we are supposed to have seven. And we really didn't have that this year, but we are now up to a full membership. Also, we are looking at hosting the Spring Quarterly Meeting of the Beautification Council of Southeast Michigan, which will be taking place on March 17th. And we would like to extend an early invitation to the council to be in attendance for that. Mayor, you will probably be asked to speak, and we would love to have you there. So, we've got a lot of wonderful things planned for the upcoming year. The calendar will be coming out very soon because we will be having, again, our January meeting and the third Thursday of this month.
Thank you so much. Thank you, and thanks to everybody on the committee. Nice job, as always. Excellent. And although it's not on the agenda, I see our county commissioner is in the audience, and I'd like to give her the opportunity, if she likes, at this time to tell us anything going on at Oakland County. Commissioner Helene Zach.
Thank you, and I want to say Happy New Year, and congratulations to all our newly-elected officials. I actually got sworn in for four of the oaths with Mayor Coulter in his past life as the county commissioner, so...
That's right.
It's thrilled, it's a pleasure to serve Ferndale. So, there hasn't been that much going on in Oakland County because I have actually been on, you know, hiatus, and I start again this week, and it's been quiet over the holidays. But we are moving into the election season, which is always an interesting one. So, I do want to let people know that there is a forum for the Area Agency on Aging 1B on Thursday, February 18th, from 10:30 a.m. to noon. The Area Agency on Aging is a wonderful nonprofit. I serve on the board as the Oakland County Appointee, and they oversee all of the federal aging dollars that come into our community, as well as many other different funding sources and programs. They work very closely with the state, and they provide, you know, when people call me about senior services, Area Agency on Aging is the go-to resource for all of us. They cover six counties. This is Area Agency 1B, and their telephone number is 800-852-7795. And this meeting, it is at the Waterford Senior Center, 3621 Pontiac Lake Road. It's like a town hall meetings where people can weigh in about resources, you know, if they're not getting what they need in the community, to speak out about how they choose to spend money. So, I think it is a really valuable resource that I use all the time, and I encourage people who attend. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nope. Thanks. Happy New Year. All right. Our next item of business this evening is a public hearing on the redevelopment liquor license for the Rust Belt Market at 22801 Woodward Avenue. Who's introducing that item this evening? You're introducing that, Marnie?
Yes. The Rust Belt Market has requested a new redevelopment Class C liquor license at 2122801 Woodward, down at the Rust Belt, to expand their event services and enhance their customers' shopping experience. The applicant and their attorney has met with the Liquor License Review Committee back at the end of October, and they further met with the DDA Board, who has a recommendation per last year's new liquor license policy. The DDA Board has an opportunity to make a recommendation, which is included in the packet here. So, with that, I do believe Mr. Best is here, if you'd like to...
Yeah, and Chris, you want to just sort of briefly describe what you're doing with this liquor license before we open up the public comment?
Sure.
Thanks.
Hello. Happy New Year, everybody.
Happy New Year.
So, Rust Belt's been in business for about five years now, and we opened an event space about two and a half years ago. And we have weddings, bar mitzvahs, all kinds of different events. And one of the ways that we saw for growth was to be able to serve liquor packages to these events. Naturally, they have to be legal. You have to get a liquor license to do so, which led us to this point. We realized that Ferndale is rife with bars and restaurants, and that the parking, parking system is taxed a couple of nights a week, and we just wanted to reiterate that what we've been doing and how we've been operating for two and a half years with an event space, it really isn't going to change a whole lot from what will look like after our liquor license is in place. It's just a way to be legal, and it's a way for us to capture that stream of revenue. Also, there's been more than a few events that get a temporary liquor license, and that is working with a nonprofit and checking with, you know, going through the proper channels the chief of police has to sign off, and it's just, it's a clunky process. And we thought, you know, why not just go legit and do this the right way? So, we are sensitive to the parking issue, and we have, I think that we highlighted that in our application, that we are going to really try hard to use valet, shuttle services, and things that are not going to further tax the parking system during those peak hours, Friday, Saturday night. We also want to do more events during the week, which the parking situation isn't as taxed during the middle of the week, not nearly as much as Friday and Saturday night.
Okay, good. So, with that, I'm going to open it up for the public. So, we'll open up the public hearing. Is there anyone from the public that would like to address council on the issuance of a liquor license for the Rust Belt Market? Come on up to the podium, give us your name, and three minutes is yours to...
Hello.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Angela Georges, and I'm the person in charge of billing for Como's of Ferndale here in Ferndale City. And we're objecting to the Rust Bucket License due to the parking issue. Not just the Rust Bucket, any other person that applies for a liquor license. If we build a structure, a building structure, it would make, it would be feasible for everyone, consumers, you know, from out, not just the city, the city people in Ferndale, but like, for instance, from Royal Oak, or Oak Park, or even Detroit, wherever they come from, you know. We just don't have enough parking. If we can build a parking structure, and that would be pretty much, that's pretty much the issue we're having, is just, you know, with the liquor license and parking.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Angela. Is there anyone else that would like to address council this evening on this item? Yes, Barry. I was going to call on you anyway. Barry Hicks is the director of our DDA, and I know the DDA weighed in on this issue.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and council members. I am Barry Hicks, the executive director from the Downtown Development Authority. I do want to say, yes, the DDA voted on this at their December 10th meeting and unanimously supported approving this liquor license. I just wanted to add to that, though. There is something that's a little bit different this time around. They're recommending approval based on an agreement, which is also in your council packet, would be entered into, and some of these concerns, we've heard people talk about, like, parking and some of those other things, or turning into a nightclub, or something happening after the liquor license is issued. We kind of address in that agreement stating that there's a business plan, which is basically what they're doing right now. Nothing is really going to change. They're still going to have events. The only difference is they're going to have the ability to provide liquor packages in-house rather than having to get temporary licenses or bringing in third parties to do it. So, what that agreement states is that they are going to continue to operate under the business plan as they submitted, and then if anything were to change with that business plan, and it, you know, did for some reason become a nightclub, council would have the ability to go back and revoke the liquor license. So, I just wanted to make sure that, to point that out, too, that that's in there.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else who'd like to address council on this issue? Jackie, I thought you were coming. All right.
We're all kind of waiting for you.
All right. So, seeing no one else from the public that would like to address, I'll close the public hearing portion of the public hearing. But we don't, we actually take this up under the regular agenda. Is that correct?
No, there's a...
We do it now.
We do it now.
We're going to do it now, okay. So, now, I don't know who else would be appropriate to weigh in.
Mayor, could I just ask a question of the applicant?
Of course.
There was the issue of the proposed license transfer agreement that Mr. Hicks just referenced, and I believe that the applicant has seen that. I just wanted perhaps for him to confirm that he is on behalf of the applicant willing to enter into that agreement with the city.
That is correct. We are in agreeance with that.
Are there questions or comments of council?
Well, I would move for purposes of discussion to recommend the Michigan Liquor Control Commission approval of the request from the Rust Belt Market, LLC, for redevelopment Class C liquor license under MCL 436/1521A1B, Sunday AM sale, Sunday PM sale, dance permit and entertainment permit, to be located at 22801 Woodward Avenue, Ferndale, Oakland County, Michigan, above all others, and to authorize the mayor and clerk to execute the license transfer agreement as in the packet.
Support.
Supported by Martin, supported by Piana. Discussion.
I just can't believe Rust Belt Market is five years old.
Almost, this is it.
Wow. Went by quick.
So, if I may, through the chair, I'd like to make my comments first. I'm in support of this liquor license, and for many reasons. And I first wanted to start off with the reasons why, and then recognition some of the concerns that residents have been talking about over the past couple of months, maybe even year. First, I wanted to say that the Rust Belt says in their application, really says it best, that they're an unconventional business model. And I think that's something that we have honored and supported and celebrated for the Rust Belt in the last five years. And like any entrepreneur, this business is trying to figure out their next step and evolve and grow their business, like every business in our downtown and throughout the community. And I also think that we have something very special, and we don't call it a retail incubator, but the Rust Belt Market is a retail incubator. There's 30 businesses in there trying to make a go at it of becoming a retail business. How many? Fifty. Fifty. I've undersold that. So, 50 businesses who are looking to establish themselves in a retail space online, and they're working with the Rust Belt owners to figure out how to grow their business. And the city has definitely partnered with the Rust Belt on attracting new programs in for entrepreneurship and business growth, like the Build Institute. So, while people may not necessarily, these businesses may not necessarily provide retail space in the downtown, they are growing businesses in Ferndale, and they are supporting entrepreneurship, and they are looking for financial sustainability. For those reasons, I think the Rust Belt in itself... For those reasons, I think the Rust Belt in itself needs to have this opportunity to continue their unconventional business model, that every other city that learns about them desires to have a Rust Belt Market in their community. So with that in mind, those are the main reasons I support the Rust Belt. We have our own retail incubator in our own downtown, and we need to sort of treat them that way. But I also recognize the concerns of impact on parking, and I think between the city and Rust Belt, there is some innovation going on with some valet services as well of off-site parking. And I know that the DDA has been strong at looking at parking recommendations, which we're going to be taking up on a later item on this agenda. And the city has been working on a retail strategy for the downtown, which I think those results will come out soon through the Master Land Use Plan update. And so for those reasons, I support it. I know that we have other, these other issues of parking to continue resolving, and I think that all the energy is moving in that right direction to make that happen. And I just wanted to say thank you to the DDA Board for being very thoughtful and deliberative about liquor license, because we know that we probably need to look at reducing the amount that we give out, or having a more balanced mix of retail and bar and restaurant mix in the downtown. So that's kind of my position on this liquor license.
Thank you.
I'd like to add to that, if I could. I am also supportive of this. I think that it is a unique model, and while I have overall concerns about parking and liquor licenses throughout the city, this is a unique situation. I want to encourage Rust Belt to thrive here in Ferndale and continue the good work that they do, both as an incubator and as a business and as a community member. So I want to express my support as well.
I am actually, Mayor, I am actually having a little bit of difficulty with this one. And surprisingly enough, I don't think that parking is going to be an issue, because it's already an established business that pulls in a pretty large clientele. I don't think all of a sudden you're going to get 200 more customers, you know, every day because now you're serving liquor. I think you're just offering more to the existing customers, and you may have a shift. Some customers may no longer go there, you'll bring in some new customers. So in reality, I don't think parking is going to be the issue. I do have issue, though, that for a while, people have been saying, we have too many establishments that serve liquor, we have too many bars and restaurants. And this isn't a bar, and this isn't a restaurant, it's a completely different model, and I completely support that. But my concern is, if we, if we go down this road of allowing this type of an establishment to start serving liquor, where does it stop? I mean, does a shoe store then come to us and say, you know what, we'd like to serve liquor now? You know, does a record store, you know, start saying, we'd like to serve liquor now? I know it sounds funny, but we don't know what's going to happen in six months or a year. So are we setting a precedence? I just, at this point, I'm wavering. There was huge support, I put a message out on social media asking people what they thought, huge support, and I'm grateful for that. You know, I would say that 99% of the people supported this plan to move forward. And so it's difficult for me, because I wasn't elected to be a dictator and say, it's got to be this way because I want it this way. I was elected to serve the people and to abide by their needs, wants, and wishes whenever possible. So I'm a little torn, and at this point, I think I have to wait till we actually go through a vote for me to say yea or nay.
All right, well, I will point out that I'm actually, when I, I saw your Facebook post, Greg, and I wanted to, and I saw how much support that the community was in favor of this. I am in support of it because I think it's an excellent opportunity. I mean, I'm always hearing about how community members would like a venue to attend, to maybe have a special event, and I think adults like to have liquor in those events. So Rust Belt, from what I've been seeing, has been doing very well for the past, how many, five years?
Five years.
And I don't, I know there are issues regarding the parking, and I know that at some point, council, we will address parking issues, I'm sure that's coming. And I just would, I'm in support of this, your establishment for what you bring to the community. It's very different, like everyone's saying it's a unique model, and I think it would be great, just, you know, I'm on other committees as well, and we are always looking for venues to have our events and trying to keep it local, so I think that's also a way to encourage that, so.
I think through the chair, to Councilman Polica's point, I don't think he's off-base about concern, but I think there's an agenda topic later in the agenda that I think is more global in the sense of discussion around liquor licenses that, and I set this aside from that, to be honest with you, because, again, I think this is a unique model, but I think your concerns and points are well taken, I just, I think, I would prefer to address that under the later agenda item.
I concur.
I remember when Rust Belt opened five years ago, and it's proof that you don't want us to be the dictators of what businesses come and go, because I would have predicted that it wouldn't have done well, to be honest with you. I scratched my head, but I'm not, I'm not a good predictor of what businesses do well and which ones don't. But part of the secret sauce, I think, to the Rust Belt has been Chris and Tiffany, quite frankly, because their creativity and their, and their, just their sort of, their dedication to doing it really well, has made it an icon in Ferndale. In just five years, it's sort of hard now to imagine Ferndale without the Rust Belt Market. And I don't, I don't think it is a, I don't think we are creating another bar or restaurant, fortunately, because I share the concern of people who say that we're sort of at the maximum capacity of those. This doesn't strike me as one of those. I guess my, one of my questions to you, Dan, Chris, if you don't mind, is what is it, I know Barry mentioned that there's, the agreement is set up so that if the business model changed, we could address that. How? Because that's not something we normally would do, right?
Well, it's a separate agreement, and in that agreement, they are contracted to bring any modification or change back to council. So there's a contractual...
And would tonight's vote be contingent on that?
They, it...
I don't recall the motion being made that way.
The applicant has indicated a willingness to enter into the agreement. It could be contingent, the actual motion wasn't contingent yet, it was directing mayor and clerk to execute the license agreement.
Would that unduly delay the process? Because I think we share, we all share that sort of desire to...
I don't think, based on what the applicant said, it would, but certainly if the maker of the motion wished to modify it to make it contingent.
I'd be happy to, if that makes, increases the comfort level of council.
Just the clarity, I mean, I, I'm comfortable with the license as it's presented.
The inclusiveness of the transfer agreement, in my opinion, I don't mean to speak, I'm sorry, this probably covers that, in my opinion, but...
The what?
And the inclusiveness of the motion of the transfer agreement probably covers that, in my opinion. It wasn't in the written motion, but I added it verbally.
Oh, okay. Do you think it covers it, Dan?
I do, in light of the applicant's comment that he's...
Since he gave me the language for it.
Right.
And the applicant has indicated a willingness to execute the agreement.
Thank you, then I'm, then I'm comfortable. Further comments or questions? A motion has been made and supported. Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers, Piana.
Yes.
Lee Smay.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Polica.
Yes.
And Mayor Polka.
Yes, thank you, that item is adopted. Thanks, Chris, good luck to you. Next item of business is the Call to Audience. This is your opportunity, for those of you who are here with us in person, to address counsel on any issue that you'd like that's not on the agenda, because we'll give you a chance to talk to that when we get there. So come on up, give us your name and your address, and three minutes is yours.
Larry Alder, 525 West Marshall.
Good evening.
I've lived there 45 years, I've been a Ferndale resident longer than most of you have been around, and I have a handicap license plate. I've had that since I had hip replacements and stuff. My wife is also handicapped, and I was appalled the other day, when I went to park my library, and I found out that I'm supposed to pay after being free all these years, pre-parking for handicap. Now, they want me to go and hobble all the way across the parking lot to the machine to get a ticket to go back to my car. So what's the point of a handicap place the first place? I'm really upset about this, I think it should remain free to handicap people, because most of us are old, we're on a fixed budget, and we're very, you know, not very mobile. And now, I talked to one guy, all the handicaps, the parking officer guy, all were taken one day, he said, well, park anywhere, as long as you got the handicap put, we won't give you a ticket. And I think that's fair. I don't think $10 or $20 we're going to get from handicapped people a day, maybe. Of course, this is worth the aggravation of the, you know, I mean, most of the people in Ferndale are old people now. If you look at the schools, the schools are consolidating, fewer students, more and more older people in Ferndale. One of the reasons we're here is because police department is so terrific, we don't have to worry about, you know, break-ins and stuff like that, and, you know, it's a good, safe place, nice place to live. But, you know, I think it's a position, unnecessary position, to handicap people. I think the person who thought this stuff didn't realize the implications.
Thank you, sir, yes.
So I request that you take them, sign them down, and make it free.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments, thanks for coming. Is there anyone else that would like to address the city council this evening? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to the next item of business, which is our consent agenda. Consent agenda is items that council considers routine and we enact in one motion unless something is pulled from the consent agenda by council. Let me read that for you now. Item A is the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting held December 14, 2015. Item B is the approval of the reappointments to the city boards and commissions as submitted by our city clerk and available online. Item C is the approval to utilize Empco to create and conduct the oral board interview for the process for police sergeant and lieutenant promotions. Item D is the approval of the backfilling of the DPW Grade 1 laborer position to replace Jeffrey Comazars, who resigned in November. Item E is the approval of the letter of understanding with AskMe998. Item F is the approval of a purchase agreement amendment for 1741 Libranoy, and authorization for the mayor and city clerk to execute said agreement. Item G is the approval for sergeants Andre and Spellman to attend the police, staff, and command at Eastern Michigan University between February and October of 2016, and to authorize the payment and invoices to the university for a total amount of $6,000 from the training budget. Item H is the approval to purchase a Western Snowplow Model HTS 7 1/2 foot straight blade, including accessories, for a total amount of $4,272 from the drug forfeiture account as submitted by our police chief. Item I is the approval of the poverty exemption guidelines and resident letter resolution. Item J is the approval of an ordinance number 1176 amending Chapter 7 of the Business Regulation Licenses Generally, Article 7, Public Lodging Houses and Multiple Dwellings, Section 7 through 131. And finally, the approval of the bills and payroll as certified by the city manager to be paid, subject to the review by the city council finance committee. What is council's pleasure on the consent agenda this evening?
Mr. Mayor, I just, I don't need to pull anything, but I'd like to make a comment about item B, the approval of reappointments of city boards and commissions. As the liaison to the Arts Commission, I just want to recognize Wagner Whitehead and Sherry Kruzman-Martin for their service on the Arts Commission, both have decided to resign, and I know Sherry's here, but just to say thank you for their service and the work that they've done. In addition, I want to recognize Mark Burton, who's the new chair of that commission, and Jeannie Davis, who continues to be a commissioner, but has stepped down as chair of that organization, and I want to thank Jeannie for her service as well.
Wonderful, yes, thank you. Is there a motion?
Actually, Mayor, I would like to pull item J for conversation, not necessarily a negative vote, but I would like to have a further conversation, so I don't know if you want to have it now.
Put it on the regular agenda? No, you can discuss it, after there's a motion and a second, we can discuss any of these items.
Okay.
So we don't have to pull it to discuss it.
Okay.
Okay.
So I make a...
But we need a motion on the consent agenda.
A motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Moved by Polica and supported by Martin. Now, any discussion on any of those items?
Okay, I just want to make, I want it to be on public record, for people to be aware, one of the things that we're pulling out of here is, what is, I'm trying to think, what is it called? Tourist homes, which is basically like Airbnb. I want people to be aware that the city is not going to be responsible for investigating or reviewing homes that are listed as tourist homes or guest kind of homes. So they could be in violation of no homeowner's insurance, they could be in violation of no smoke alarms or fire equipment. People are basically going to be using these services at their own risk. So I just want to make sure that people aren't, you know, a year from now, someone doesn't use the service, has something tragic happen at a facility, and then tries to sue the city, because we didn't inspect these type of facilities, you know, businesses that are going on in the city, so.
All right. Other comments, questions on the consent agenda? All right, Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers, Lee Smay.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Polica.
Yes.
Piana.
Yes.
And Mayor Polka.
Yes, thank you, the consent agenda is adopted. Moving on now to the regular agenda. Item A is the appointment of council members to boards and commissions. We do this at the beginning of each term. We'll take these one at a time, and anyone can nominate themselves for one of these positions. If there's a position where there's more than one nomination, we can vote on those, otherwise we'll just sort of fill these in and perhaps vote on them as a slate if it goes down. So, starting with number one, the mayor pro tem.
If I may, it's been my honor to serve as mayor pro tem for the last two years, but I would like to nominate Councilwoman Melanie Piana for mayor pro tem for the next term.
Support. Any other nominations for that? Do you accept that?
I do accept that.
Okay. All right. Is it okay, I guess I should ask Dan or Marnie, if I go through all of these and we enact them all in one vote, or do we need to vote on these individually?
Well, to the extent that there's unanimity, that's fine for one vote. If there's a disagreement, you should have that as a separate.
We have to vote that separately, okay.
You've got to throw that one in.
All right, so let's see how we do.
This should be interesting.
The Agenda Committee, which is two people, if I understand correctly. I currently serve on it, and last year, Councilman Lennon served on that with me as well. Is anyone interested in serving on the Agenda Committee?
I am actually interested in serving then on the Agenda Committee.
All right. I would also be interested in continuing to serve on it.
I'll support that.
Yep.
Support.
Anyone else? Okay. Board of Zoning Appeals.
I would like to nominate myself. I have served on that board for the last two years, and I find it quite interesting. However, we've only met, I think, three times or four times, so I would like a little bit more experience on that board.
All right.
Godspeed.
I was on it for six years prior to being elected, so you can have it.
Thanks.
All right.
The beauty of it is, if you don't have meetings, it means that your codes are actually, your zoning is very well done, so.
That's a good point, right? Okay, the BRA, which is one position? Or, yeah, it doesn't have on here, but I believe that's one position.
I'll continue if everybody agrees. We met approximately zero times.
Zero times, wait, I want to do that one.
Perhaps there's an opportunity for committee structure at some point.
All right, the Capital Improvement Plan Committee, which I think is currently Councilman Polica, correct?
Yes, I believe it's council, it's myself and Councilwoman Piana. There's two, I believe there's two seats for that.
Is that a two-seater?
Yeah. And I would be interested in staying on that board committee. Anyone want to join me?
I'm interested in staying on, too.
Oh, okay.
If that works.
All right, I'm not hearing anyone else, anyone else? All right. Employee Retirement System Board of Trustees. This one, and I'll just mention, this one and the Police and Fire, I'm on by virtue of being mayor, so I don't get to...
And I chair one, and I sit on the other one, and it meets at 7:00 AM, you're welcome, and I'd be interested in continuing to serve.
7:00 AM.
Thank you, I fully support that nomination.
Me, too. Full force.
And for Police and Fire Retirement as well, is that, if that's okay with everyone? All right, then that'll... with everyone? All right, then that'll continue to be Dan and I. Uh, the Ferndale Public School Superintendent Advisory Committee.
That's currently me, and we've met a total number of zero times in my tenure, but I'd like to nominate Raylon Leaks May. I think that's a natural fit for her.
I will be happy to.
Would you make a conflict with your, uh, with your, uh, president?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
No, because she's, she's, she's off the board now.
I'm off the board.
Oh, but this is different.
Yeah, this is a council.
It's a liaison.
Created liaison position. Maybe we should, I don't know, you and, uh, the superintendent could talk about reviving it, but.
Is this really part of our charter?
Yeah. Scott Galloway served in it before I did, and I believe he had a total number of zero meetings as well.
Well, we're going to change that, I hope.
You have a much better relationship with superintendent now than any of us have.
This is when we met with the superintendent on buildings. This is the issue I brought up.
Okay.
So the next one would be the Council Finance Committee.
I currently serve on that with former Councilman Lennon.
Do?
Um, I, if others want to be on it, that's fine. If not, I'll be willing to serve on it, continue to serve on it.
I'm willing to, uh, serve on it too. I haven't been on this.
Oh, it's exciting.
Any other interest on that committee? See, we're doing this pretty well. Look at that. Okay, so the Highway Committee.
Yes.
Yes, every year.
We have two of them. Woodward and Eight Mile. They're both highways.
Is this a sidewalk?
Nope, the sidewalk is a different one. This would be the Highway Committee. I do meet though once a year. Don't pretend to know what this committee does, to be honest with you. It's in our charter.
But then I'd like to sit down.
No, but we, we put somebody on it every year.
City Attorney Chris is looking it up for us. We're all gonna go.
Let's move on. Yeah, let's, let's come back to that one. Uh, I think we all know what the Liquor License Review Committee is. That one gets a lot more attention. Um.
I would be interested in serving on that committee.
Is it one or two spots?
Looks like one.
One, one spot. Anyone else interested in serving on that?
I, I'd put my name in for that, but I won't take him, I won't fight him for it.
Well, all right, then. Um, the Ordinance Committee, that is two people, correct?
Yes.
I'd like to take Councilman Lennon's spot.
Okay.
I'm currently on it. I'll continue unless someone else would like to, um, be on that committee.
Is anyone else interested in the Ordinance Committee?
I don't have to remain on it.
Otherwise, we'll say.
I find it very interesting.
Okay. Uh, Planning Commission.
I'd be interested in serving on the Planning Commission.
And I support that. After six years, I'm, I think it's time for.
That's a hard work. Now, that is a very hard working commission.
It is a hard working commission.
Thanks for all your work there. And Dan, thanks for your willingness to step up. That's a, that's.
I will, um, just as a note, side note, I will continue to serve on the Master Land Use Plan Committee, Steering Committee, um, until it's approved.
Sure.
I can't really step away.
And we do a sidewalk hardship committee. Uh, I currently serve on that previously with, uh, Councilman Lennon. It meets once a year, but during the sidewalk reassessment, um, process.
Usually in the fall, right?
Yes. I'd be willing to do that if anyone wants to join me.
I would be interested in joining you on that one.
All right. Anyone else? Uh, SMCOG, Southeast Michigan Council of Government, uh, Alt, um, Rep, and then alternate is typically our city manager, is, I think, is how we've done that in the past. Haven't we actually, currently they're alternate?
Uh, you used to, but the last couple of years, you've all been interested, so.
Oh, okay.
So it's up to you guys?
Actually, I think it was the last time around, um, Mike Lennon said that he couldn't get to them for the meetings. And so I am humbly asking for someone to take over my position. Um, my job has made it difficult to make it to these meetings to represent Ferndale.
I'd be happy to.
Anyone else? All right, finally, uh, Dan, Chris, what is the Highway Committee?
Uh, Mayor, at this point, I haven't actually known where that is in church. I'm looking at your.
I'm looking up here.
While they're searching, I would like to ask about, uh, the, all of these committees. Now, I would certainly like to get experience and find out more about all of these committees. What are the, what's the protocol regarding council members attending, even though they're not on the committee?
Opening.
Yeah.
Opening to call them to.
Yes, I love them, but the, um, you will get a council packet, um, with all the dates and times. It's also on the website, so you'll, you'll be made aware when they meet.
Any session board meeting you want to join us on, you are.
We do post them all, so they're open.
Um. It is. I'm not quite sure what we do with Highway.
Looking it up online here.
If I may, it says that it is controlled by City Charter, Chapter Three, Section thirteen and forty-five. City Charter, Chapter Three, Section thirteen and forty-five, and that two city council members are selected at the organizational meeting to serve.
And what's the purpose of the committee? Is there a committee purpose there?
It's not in thirteen.
Wow.
And it's not in forty-five.
Well, since you were on it from last year.
I don't think I was.
I don't know. It says you are.
It doesn't appear to be in either of those two sections.
I'm willing to be on it again.
Mayor, I would suggest not addressing that. We will look into.
Thank you. All right.
Reference for the next council meeting.
Okay.
Look, I was just gonna move that we approve the appointments that we've described.
Yeah, look, turns out we were able to do this amicably, so we have the right amount of people for the right amount of slots. It's been moved by Councilman Martin. Uh, is there a second?
I second.
It has been seconded by, not yet, the Mayor Pro Tem, but Councilwoman Piana, until this is done. Uh, is there a discussion?
Um, yeah, it, it says in the packet this doesn't include any of the city council liaisons, but I thought it would be appropriate at this time to mention what those are. Um, in addition to these committees, council members serve on, um, the Parks and Rec, Arts and Beautification, the Ferndale Environmental Sustainability Committee. I'm missing one. Beautification Commission, and.
And in case you're thinking, "I'm a slacker," I'm assigned to about four or five, just by virtue of being mayor, so.
Yes, it's on the list. The DDA is on there.
DDA, Woodward Avenue Action Association, the Eight Mile Boulevard Association, and I think there's one other one, but yes.
We also, uh, elect a, um, MML representative, and I serve, um, in that capacity for this board. So all of us have additional liaison responsibilities.
Yeah, these are the charter sort of dictated positions, but there's a.
The must haves. I'd recommend to the mayor that in the second council meeting in January, we take up the liaison positions, just to, for clarification, because I think there's, some of them are very clear cut, like arts and parks and, and environment, but there are some that are a little fuzzy, or like beautification, that I think just clarity around the discussion would be helpful.
I concur.
All right, why don't we have plan for, to do that at the next meeting? All right, very good. Any other discussion? Did we have a, um, yes, we had a support. We had, moved by Martin, supported by, uh, Piana. Any other discussion? If not, Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Martin?
Yes.
Polika?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Leaks May?
Yes.
And Mayor Polter.
Yes, thank you. Those, uh, appointments are adopted. Uh, moving on to regular agenda, item B is a consideration of a parental leave policy. And Jenny or Mel, or who's gonna introduce that item?
Um, I'm.
Councilwoman Piana.
I'm going to introduce this item.
All right.
Um, I'm very excited for our city council to consider, um, a new policy that I think, um, really puts, um, the city of Ferndale as a, a, a smart city, looking at some smart policies in order to attract, um, and retain talent. And, um, with the support of our human resources director and the city manager, this, um, new policy looks at, um, providing, um, paid parental leave for men and women, um, for up to twelve weeks, at least six weeks paid, um, and then, uh, staff have the opportunity to, um, have, uh, PTO matched. So if they have two weeks of PTO, or ten days, they would get ten days matched, or forty hours, eighty hours, um, by the city, up to twelve weeks. Um, and one of the reasons, I mean, the main reasons, um, I think this is the time for the city to, um, look at this. It really is about, um, attracting and retaining talent. Um, cities are, uh, in a position of, um, really trying to compete with the, the private market, more so now that, um, municipal benefits are on par with the private sector, um, with no pensions and no defined benefits, um, and we have 401Ks. Um, it's really important that we, um, look at how do we become more strategic at attracting, um, workers into the community. Um, and the other part for me really is making sure that we are being very supportive of women, um, particularly women, um, where we're trying to attract women in leadership. Um, and providing, uh, paid parental leave is, um, something that the private sector is moving towards, and so this is in line with that trend. And I also think we're looking at, you know, um, uh, supporting families and, uh, having a gender equality, gender balance, so that men and women can have the same time off. You know, historically, men, uh, women, um, have to take their paid time off of what they accrue, and it may not be, um, enough to get them through their, um, pregnancy, as well as recovery of pregnancy. And I think this positions us, the city, in a really good, um, place, uh, to provide a new benefit for employees that will offer better balance for families, um, provide a flexible work environment, and, um, really, um, enhance our work-life culture, which will then, um, improve morale and, um, attract talent and keep them. So, um, I've asked Jenny, our re- Human Resources Director, to, um, sort of, in April, to answer any of the, um, implementation, um, since they're responsible for implement, for managing and overseeing the policy. And this has been a very deliberative process with a lot of research of what's happening, um, nationally, statewide, um, what's happening in the private marketplace, and then, um, looking at how cities in Michigan are providing this type of benefit or not. So I.
Jenny, do you want to, um, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't mean.
And I'd welcome your questions, and.
Do you want to add anything before we do questions? Do you want to, I mean, that was actually fairly thorough, but is there anything as our HR director that you want to add to?
Um, I think I echo Councilmember Piana's comments, um, specifically as it relates to creating a better work-life balance within our house here at the city, but additionally, um, attracting and retaining talent, um, within the municipal, municipal arena has steadily gotten more and more difficult as the years have gone on, and we're seeing it in some of the recruitments that we are working with, uh, most importantly, some of our higher level director level positions at times. And, um, I'm very excited about the opportunity to further enhance our work culture by providing some of these more, um, progressive benefits, if you will, in comparison to other, um, municipalities in this region. We are currently not aware of any Michigan public sector, uh, municipality who offers this benefit, so we're really excited to get on the map, if you will, with regards to that, but also continue to be a place that people want to work at and want to stay here for those reasons that other places don't have those benefits. So I'm very excited to implement.
Um, a motion would be in order for us to have conversation.
I move to approve and implement a paid, paid parental leave policy for City of Ferndale full-time benefit eligible employees.
Support. Moved by Polika, supported by Martin. Now, any discussion, comments, questions of council?
I, I'm sorry. I'd fully support this, this policy. Um, by nature, uh, as Councilwoman Piana indicated, cities generally pay staff a lot less than corporations, and when times are bad, we have, you know, pick of the crop of great people, and they don't want to leave. But when times are good, they all want to get better jobs, better pay, and better benefits. Um, we can't always offer better pay, so we have to do something, and I think this is a great opportunity to offer something. Granted, not every employee would take it, but it's an opportunity. Um, I think, um, there's some confusion at times. People think that, um, the Family Medical Leave Act, um, FMLA, um, covers this kind of thing. It doesn't. All FMLA covers is that your job is there should you leave for family reasons. Um, you're not reimbursed, you're not paid for that time off, um, taking, um, taking care of family needs. Work, work-life balance is very important. Um, I, I just think it makes sense. Corporations are, are starting to go, um, go in this direction. Um, we're actually the last, um, first world country to offer this kind of policy. Um, small little countries, you know, across Europe are offering these type of policies for years. Um, so I think it's the right move.
Yeah, I would just add that I think, uh, I, I recognize and appreciate, uh, Councilman Mayor Pro Tem, Piana's, um, discussion about the, the attractiveness of this to, uh, recruit, uh, women into more executive positions, but I think it's really attractive for men. I, you know, even, this is progressive even for the private sector to offer paternal leave. This is fantastic, and I'm very proud to support this.
There are, um, a couple of technical things that I wanted to point out as part of this, um, um, policy that were important, um, for me in making sure that, um, the city administration had the flexibility and, uh, to work with, um, employees who were leaving. And so there is a, a plan in place that employee actually has to have a written, um, agreed upon plan while they're away with their department head, um, so that, uh, no one will be left, um, taking on more work that they were, uh, unexpected to do. Um, and, and this really is for, um, newborns and adoption, and adoption. So for men and women, and, um, there is, you have, actually have to have written documentation that you are going to have a child. And so, um, I, I think this was, you know, it's important to have those types of, um, policies in place.
April, could you talk just a little bit about how you anticipate managing these changes?
I think it's, it's gonna depend on each department and who is, is off for the job for that amount of time. And often, you know, especially for those that have planned ahead, they had to use their own sick and vacation time. So, so they had to use their own sick and vacation time. So we're somewhat adept at, at managing that already, um, but what happens then is they've used up all their time, and now they come back to work. Now they don't have any vacation or sick time to, to manage that new family that they just had. Um, so what we'll do is take it by case-by-case basis. I think in public safety, you're gonna, you, you know, you'll cover some through overtime costs, and administratively, you'll have other people take on tasks for a little while, or put a few projects on hold, but it's nothing that's surmountable. And it's a lot easier to manage for six to twelve weeks than to have somebody leave employment and have to go through the whole retraining and recruiting and, and doing all of that as well. So it'll be a case-by-case basic basis, but I believe we'll be able to manage that appropriately. There will be no loss of service to the community.
You, you touched on it a little bit, but, um, and I'm supportive of the policy, by the way, just to make, make that clear. Uh, you, you touched on, uh, potential overtime costs or others. Do you have a, I know it's impossible to, to know when people are going to get pregnant or adopted, but we kind of have an average of how many times that happens. Do you have any, have you guys done any sort of estimate about the, the cost to the city of, for this policy?
Sure. Well, for instance, in two thousand and fourteen, we had four babies that were brought into the families of our Ferndale, um, employees, and in two thousand and fifteen, we had one. So it kind of depends. It'll have an ebb and flow of that. Um, and again, it depends on the situation. For instance, with Police and Fire, if we have minimum staffing already there, there'll be no overtime costs at all. If there's, uh, potential for, you know, somebody who's off for twelve weeks, or six weeks, or ten weeks, and there are certain days that there is, um, you know, the minimum staffing isn't met. I think we looked at possibly two, maybe two thousand dollars per person, so maybe ten thousand dollars a year that we're looking at. But again, it really is, depends, and in some departments, we won't have any overtime costs. There won't be any, so it'll all even itself out. One of the things that Jenny and I will be doing over the, of the next, uh, year of this policy is tracking that and making sure that we understand what that means, especially as more and more communities, hopefully, get on this bandwagon. We can see, maybe there's a better way to do that, or a different way to do that, but to really take a look at the true cost and it, as well as the true benefit to the community.
Thank you. And at that point, I think it's interesting, uh, you talk about other communities and maybe anticipating that they do this. It was surprising to me that no community in Michigan offers any paid maternity leave. And so, uh, I congratulate, uh, Councilwoman Piana for, for taking up this issue. I think, I, I absolutely agree with you about the need to retain and attract talent in this more, more increasingly competitive, uh, talent market. Um, and so I applaud you for bringing this forward, and I'm glad that Ferndale can hopefully show the way to other communities, um, on this issue. Sir, you have your hand up.
Yeah.
But speak to the mic because folks at home will, I'm sure, want to hear you. All right.
Is there any, any provision for a male, uh, employee, if his wife becomes ill and he has to, uh, run the household for a while while the wife is in. the household for a while while the wife is in hospital or ill or something? Any provision for, you know, reimbursement or keeping his pay or what?
Good question. She's our HR director, Jenny, right now. Jenny, how would that work?
Yeah, so we do have current policies in place under the Family Medical Leave Act that would be covered in that person, the male would have the ability to stay home for up to 12 weeks to care for his wife. Typically, in that situation, we not only have our paid time off policies, but there's also provision under our sick leave policy in most, all of our contracts, actually, whereby employees, if there's ever an extenuating circumstance, they can apply to city council for extension of their sick leave, which has happened in extreme cases where that was necessary. So we do already have policies in place to address those specific issues.
Thank you. Good question, Sarah. Appreciate it.
I would like to, I am definitely in support of this parental leave, because I don't know if any of you, some of you may know, I've said it many times, I've done this five times, this was not made available to me. I think it's, I salute Mayor Protem Piana, Ms. Camples, and City Manager Lynch for bringing this to the forefront, because I think it's really definitely going to, definitely going to find, have us be able to maintain our talent, because, one, it's one less thing to worry about. And knowing that your community and your city supports you, just in the expansion of your families, is just, is just a wonderful move. And I'm just really proud of this council for taking such a step, and I'm proud to be here.
I really appreciate your comments and supporting this policy. But I also wanted to thank three people. In addition to my friends, my women friends and male friends who've had babies over the years, and I've observed their struggles, their joy and struggles, the joy of having a baby, but their struggle of managing time off while having it. There are three city employees who actually helped inform my opinion on this for the City of Ferndale. And one was a police officer a couple of years ago who adopted a son. And unbeknowning, he does not know that he influenced me in this way, but our Parks and Rec Director, and as well as our city manager. And, you know, I think women in leadership positions, we need to grow and support women. And I think this definitely helps us do that. And so all three of these individuals had babies, and I'm sorry, this policy wasn't in place for you then, but I encourage you to have more babies and take care of your kids.
Oh, that's both.
Yes, I know.
They will, he will. All right. Is there any further discussion on this item? Marty, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers Pollocka.
Yes.
Piana.
Yes.
Weeks May.
Enthusiastically, yes.
Martin.
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you. That item is adopted.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jenny. Moving on now to regular agenda item C is the consideration of the DDA Board of Directors' resolution to city council regarding future liquor licenses. And Barry, do you want to introduce and explain what the DDA is recommending to council this evening?
Evening once again. Yes, basically, we talked about the liquor license earlier tonight for Rust Belt Market, and I think everybody on the DDA board was supportive of that due to the unique nature of it, and also due to the agreement that was going to be put into place. In this particular instance, this was a resolution that they also passed at their December 10th meeting stating they would like city council to not consider any more liquor licenses until after amendments might be made to the zoning ordinance regarding parking requirements, specifically for restaurants. I believe there is something going through right now, correct me if I'm wrong, has that gone to Planning Commission yet? No. Next Wednesday it goes to Planning Commission. So you should be hopefully seeing that come back before you soon. But the DDA would like you to consider that ordinance first before considering approving any more liquor licenses. And that's what this resolution is saying in summary.
What exactly is going to the Planning Commission next week? Or, I'm sorry?
It is going to be an ordinance recommending the amendment to some of the off-street parking requirements.
So Derek, yeah, maybe, could you?
Absolutely. The city staff and the Planning Commission has been working on sometime in response to questions that both council and the DDA has had over the last years regarding liquor licenses, parking issues. And one of the things that was identified and targeted is currently, within the central business district, all uses, whether they be retail, office, restaurant, or bar, enjoy an exemption from the off-street parking requirements, meaning any business that locates an existing business or an existing building within the central business district, which is a zoning district, is exempt from having to build any of the off-street parking requirements normally associated with those uses anywhere else in the city. What's being considered by the Planning Commission is the elimination of that exemption for only restaurant and bar or liquor license-type establishments, meaning that those establishments would no longer enjoy that exemption in the downtown or in the CBD, not in the downtown proper, but within the central business district. Meaning they would either have to, one, build the required off-street parking lot or parking spaces in the downtown, or pay in lieu, which assigns a dollar value to the parking spaces that would normally be associated with the use. And then those, that payment in lieu goes directly into the parking fund, and by ordinance can only be used for capacity increases within the CBD. So that ordinance amendment is going to the Planning Commission for consideration next week. It's something that staff is recommending approval of, and something that goes directly to the relationship between restaurant and bar-type uses and the peak hour parking capacity problems. And through the payment in lieu function addresses those directly. So staff is recommending approval of that and does expect the Planning Commission to hear that next Wednesday.
Can you clarify the parameters again? I'm sorry. So this would be in effect in what geographic area?
The central business district is the core part of the downtown. It's immediately...
Where the TIF is currently collected?
No, it's different than the TIF district, and it's different than the DDA borders. It's actually a zoning district that encompasses parcels, and it's available, you can see it on the city zoning map. It is a zoning district that is centered on the Nine Mile Woodward intersection and extends, I believe, to, and don't quote me on this, but I believe it extends to Plana Van to the west, Paxton to the east, Camborn to the north, and Marshall to the south. It's the farthest extent of it.
To the east would be what?
Paxton, I believe. But we can provide a map as well, but it's that zoning district that's under consideration for.
Through the chair, are there any applications currently pending that this, us approving this would impact that we know of?
I would have to ask city clerk, do we have any liquor license applications under the middle right now? No.
Would this be a suspension of just all liquor licenses as far as even temporary ones?
Well, and again, within the CBD, it wouldn't be a suspension of liquor licenses at all. It would just mean that they would no longer enjoy that exemption from either providing off-street parking or paying into the parking fund for the normally required spaces. They would still be able to request a license, and that would still be able to be considered by both the DDA and council. It's just they would no longer enjoy that exemption from the off-street parking requirements.
If I may through the... Sure.
When did this exemption go into place? Because I recall, I don't know how long it's been, it's been five years for Rust Belt to be open, it's got to be seven or eight years for Rosie O'Grady's. But when Rosie O'Grady's opened, there was a big hoo-ha about his parking spaces that he was eliminating to create his patio. And he had to pay thousands of dollars to eliminate that parking.
Correct.
And then all of a sudden, now no one had to have that. So when did this come into play? Because just last year, the WAB built, you know, their patio out and eliminated four, five parking spaces there.
Couple of different things there. The payment in lieu requirement for the elimination of existing parking spaces, legal parking spaces, has always been there, or at least as long as I've been here before I've been here. And that's the instance with Rosie O'Grady's. There was the elimination of existing parking spaces. In that case, you have to pay in lieu.
On public property, right?
It's, public or, yeah, public or private, I believe. I'd have to go back and look. The WAB spaces, although people parked there, those are not legal parking spaces. They never met the definition or the requirements of the zoning ordinance for parking spaces. They weren't, I mean, they used them for parking spaces, but it's similar to other some parking spaces along alleys in the city. People parked there, but it's never been legal or conforming parking spaces. The parking spaces at Rosie O'Grady's were defined, striped, and approved as parking, whereas other instances weren't. So those were the difference. This now would eliminate the exemption from, not just from removing them, but require the payment in lieu for what you would normally need to construct, which is the significant difference.
So essentially, this will add a financial, I don't want to say penalty, but it will increase the cost of a project.
Correct.
Wouldn't preclude it necessarily, but it would certainly increase the cost.
It could have a significant impact on it. The relationship and the recommendation came from staff, because there is a direct correlation between the amount of land use we have in the downtown, the CBD, that is under restaurant, bar, and our peak capacity issue. There's a, and this change is a one-to-one change that directly impacts what the cause of the peak hour issues are, and then sets that money aside for direct use to resolve the problem.
But only in the short, through the chair, if I may, only in the short term, right? Because really what this is saying is until the Planning Commission considers what's going to the next Wednesday and it comes to us, this is really a short-term resolution, right?
The resolution of the DDA, if approved, and council takes action on the payment in lieu, would be short-term, yes. The payment in lieu would be a permanent change.
It's just that gap until the Planning Commission gets their stuff done and...
Yeah, recommends the council. Correct.
But if they don't, for, if for some reason the Planning Commission doesn't agree with this and doesn't recommend that to council, then this would just stay in effect? It's consideration.
I haven't seen the actual resolution.
Yea or nay, once they take it up.
Right.
This stops.
It's yea or nay. So either way, then, yeah, it would stop.
Okay, okay.
I view this, I really appreciate your word of short-term, because I think it's just another tactic as part of our strategy to improve our parking system. And originally, I wasn't supportive of this until I had more information about what, for two and a half years, I've been asking for information about what's the conversion of commercial square footage in our downtown from retail to restaurant and bars. And with our retail strategy, I think that is coming through as part of this, informing this recommendation from the DDA. And I think it's very thoughtful and deliberative of coming up with this tactic to address the pressures on the parking system. So it really comes back to being short-term, and in the long term, it, you know, may need to be removed at some point from the Planning Commission, but who knows when that would happen, right?
Right. Mr. Mayor, if I may, it seems like we're moving into discussion, so I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the resolution as presented.
Is there support?
I support. Thank you.
I'd have to cut you off, Mayor Protem.
No, I totally forgot.
All right. Now, continuing with the conversation.
Did we hear whether or not there are businesses or liquor licenses applications that would be affected by this right now? Did we hear?
I think she said there isn't, there isn't a current one.
There isn't a current, okay.
If I may, what about potential? For example, across the street, they've been trying to open up a business for the last two years. We know...
Which one?
We used to be the Black Owl.
We've already approved it.
They already have it.
So this would affect them in no way at all? Okay.
Yeah, we approved that over two years ago, I think.
I don't know if we approved a liquor license back then.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, this memo really kind of, the second paragraph of this memo, it says that the research of the future land use potential from the Gibbs Planning Group that is supporting our master plan update indicated that 50% of the square footage in downtown Ferndale was restaurants and bars. And this is the data I've been looking for, for two and a half years. And so I really think this is a powerful piece of information and which strengthens the DDA board and city council's ability to really be strategic about how to move forward outside of just purchasing a deck to address additional parking capacity. I think it positions both boards of really looking at a retail strategy. And I think that's what is a complementary action that is going to support these tactics of parking in lieu of payment. I also know that the, I think city council's going to have to review the parking in lieu and payment too that's existing on the books as recommended by the, our Hamilton Anderson Associates. They said that it hasn't been used, and so we need to look at the current policy on the books to see why it's not being applied and implemented with new development. So I think it's another avenue that they discovered for us to continue this conversation about parking in lieu and payment policy.
Can you expand on that, please?
They plan, well, I think Derek covered it with Rosie O'Grady's, but the parking in lieu of payment was also supposed to, for new developments, if I was, if I'm not mistaken.
There is a fee schedule for payment in lieu that was adopted by council in 2010, I believe, looking at Marty, too, that sets the price. But it is supposed to, by ordinance, be reviewed every year. We haven't had another instance since either Rosie's or, I think there was one issue that fell under the current ordinance definition. With the change in the ordinance, one of the things the Planning Commission will be looking at is the pay schedule to make sure that it's still appropriate, and then make recommendations to council whether it should stay the same or new, or changes should be made. And that's basically the cost per space of what it costs payment in lieu.
Retail space or the retail market value for that space?
Well, that's what they're going to discuss. They're going to discuss the value of a space.
The difference.
Both construction and what the value of it is for construction of a new space, and make recommendations on what that cost per space value should be. And ultimately, that's a council decision. And then, and it should be reviewed yearly. It just, it hasn't been because the ordinance hasn't been utilized.
I'd just like to say that I want to thank and compliment the DDA Board of Directors bringing this resolution to us as the kind of partnership we've been working towards for a long time. And I really appreciate the input that the DDA board has provided in doing this and working with us through this. So I just, I want to make sure the discussion's complete with that, that thanks and compliment.
And you sort of stole what, one of the things I wanted to say is, we have been working over the last several years to increase the communications and just the thoughtfulness of our decisions. And I think this is a great example of it. I'm staring at a couple of the executive committee members now, also the new executive director. But it's really helpful that we're working in this kind of a partnership. I think this is a thoughtful and reasonable way to address an important issue. It is just a short-term solution. We are going to work together this year on increasing parking capacity in some way, and that's going to be challenging in its own right, but we're going to do that. And so I appreciate you guys bringing this forward and the way this has come about. And I certainly support it. I want the residents to understand that we all understand the issues with parking, especially on the peak days of Friday, Saturday night. And sometimes it may feel like after the 360, everything has stopped, but I assure you that we, the city, the DDA, planners, continue to try to bring forth a project that will both satisfy the downtown and our residents and also address the parking issues in Ferndale. So thanks, you guys. Appreciate it.
And through the chair, one last thing. When we decided council to ask the DDA board to provide recommendations on liquor license, one of my concerns that I raised at the time was making sure that we didn't leave any applicant waiting longer than they needed to to get through this process. And I know this was the first one to go through that. And so I just wanted to say thank you to the Rust Belt, I think, working with us and the DDA board, but also for the DDA board to actually getting this done before the, between the holidays, as we all know, is kind of difficult. So, thank you. And I, and I think that we'll not, in the future, we won't have significant delays between application, submittal, and recommendations, and then adoption for future liquor license, whenever that process, if the process stays the same. So my concern was business friendliness and maintaining that status.
Any other questions, concerns, comments? If not, Marty, I think you can call the roll.
Councilmembers Weeks May?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Pollocka?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you. That item is adopted. Now, the, to what we're now calling regular agenda item D, Councilwoman Piana has walked on a resolution in opposition to Public Act 269.
Yes, just a brief introduction, no, brief introduction, prior to Christmas, the holidays, our state legislators acted or...
our state legislators acted or put in a Senate Bill 571. And at the last page of the 50-page-plus bill was a short paragraph that limited public entities for educating their residents 60 days before a ballot initiative. This has almost all public agencies concerned. And MML, the Michigan Municipal League, has come out strongly in opposition, which is now Public Act 269 because the governor approved the action shortly after the new year. And now, MML is asking cities and public entities to repeal Public Act 269. And the resolution in front of you is a resolution supporting the repeal of the Public Act 269, Senate Bill 571. And if you allow me the opportunity to read it, I would love to do so. Governor Snyder signed into law with immediate effect Public Act 269, Senate Bill 571, despite widespread calls for a veto of this bill, including from members of his own party, and both the Michigan Senate and the Michigan House of Representatives passed Senate Bill 571 late into the night of December 16th, 2015, just prior to recessing for the year. And one of the last-minute amendments made to Senate Bill 571 without the knowledge of the Michigan Municipal League or other local government organizations and approved without any public testimony or awareness was the new law inserted into Section 57, subsection 3. And this new law prohibits a public body or a person acting for a public body from using public funds or resources for the purpose of communicating any information to the electorate regarding a local ballot question that is to appear on the ballot within 60 days of an election. And this law places an immediate gag order on entities with ballot questions on the March 8th ballot and every election thereafter. And municipal elected and appointed officials have a civic and legal duty to the residents of the communities to fully inform them regarding the issues placed before them, upon which they may exercise their constitutional right to vote. And existing laws, including the former language and Section 57, and decades of guidance from the Michigan Secretary of State, already prohibit the use of public funds to advocate for or against ballot issues. And existing laws already provide for allowance of elected and appointed officials to express their views without fear of violating the act. And because this new law bans only communication on local ballot issues, it creates inconsistent treatment of statewide ballot questions versus local initiatives. And there are substantial questions regarding the constitutionality and legality of the new law, including a possible ban on freedom of speech. Therefore, it would be resolved that the City Council of the City of Ferndale calls for an immediate repeal of the new language in Section 57, subsection Public Act 269 of 2016.
And do you make that motion?
I wholeheartedly think so.
I support.
I support.
Yeah.
I think Councilman Martin was the first one to weigh in with the support. Any other comments?
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment. I think that I fully, wholeheartedly support this, although I don't expect the action to be taken. I'm just so disappointed over this and any number of pieces of legislation and action that the governor has endorsed recently. And I just think this is ignorant and repugnant. And the fact that he has taken an approach that says, "I'll sign it and the legislators can fix them later," which was a public statement he made around this, is irresponsible. And I wish we could send this in capital letters and magic markers so somebody sees it outside of the normal mail, because it's just absurd that any elected official, especially a governor of a state like Michigan, would act in this manner.
And I want to say I thank you to Mayor Protem, Piana, I gotta be comfortable saying that, for bringing this forward and creating the opportunity for us to speak on this publicly. This is horrible. And to be honest, I will be damned if I'm gonna let someone deny me the opportunity to speak to the people of Ferndale about issues that are happening locally. So chief, captain, I like my cell kept at about 70 degrees.
I don't think anybody who watches these would expect you to hold your tongue.
Well, and, you know, I'll just pile on and say, especially from a governor who ran on competence and bipartisanship, they can't deliver water to Flint, which is my most furious issue with the governor right now. But to take these sort of partisan swipes is just unconscionable. And I don't know where the governor has gone astray, but I hope that the people of Michigan take him to task and in our own little way of doing that here tonight, I'm happy to vote in support.
And if I may, through my final, my only comment is that I predict that this public act will propel cities further into financial distress, making them more eligible for financial management. And I think this is definitely a tool to push-
Creating more flints.
It's creating more flints. If cities can't educate their public about why they need to repave their roads or invest in their sewers so that their pipes aren't full of blood, and they get denied raising those funds, then they are absolutely positioning themselves into financial distress in some way and unable to provide service or equality of life for their residents. And I think this is perilous public act for all public entities and for the public across Michigan.
Well said. With that, Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmembers, Martin?
Yes.
Polika?
Absolutely, yes.
Piana?
Yes.
Leaks May?
Yes.
And Mayor Colter?
Yes, thank you, that item is adopted. Moving on now to call to council. Please, Chief Collins, anything, or captain, you could start handing off this duty to him if you want.
I'll let him watch one.
All right.
For the order tonight, we do want to say, wish everybody a Happy New Year and a welcome to a conference.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jill, anything from the recreation department? Anything tonight? Jenny, anything else from HR this evening?
Good evening. Really quickly, I just wanted to announce that we are currently recruiting for a customer service representative position within our city hall. This is a very important position within our local government. This person really serves as the face of our city hall. And when our residents come to our counter to do business, this would be the first person that they would come in contact with. So if anybody is interested in more information on that position or in applying, they can visit our website at www.ferndalemi.gov and click on the Human Resources tab. So that's it, thank you.
Excellent, thanks, Jenny. Fire marshal, Batten, anything from the fire department this evening? You've waited through the meeting, you might as well have your 15 seconds of fame. And by the way, how are you feeling, sir?
Very good, thank you.
Yeah?
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, good.
I just want to congratulate you on, one, on passing that parental leave. I'm sure my, for eight kids, my wife would have loved to have had that in place. But we just want to caution people, we had three fires since we met last time over the, past the holidays, thankfully. But at the end of the year, it was two, and then first of the year, one. One was due to a careless smoker, one was due to a careless cook. And again, we want to caution people, these are the leading causes of fires in our community. Make sure that they don't walk away from things unattended on the stove, that they are gonna smoke, that they properly dispose of their cigarettes. The third fire is still under investigation with DTE Energy, so we're looking into that. I'd like to thank the chief and the city manager for appointing Jack Pichet. Firefighter Jack Pichet is my, replaced me while I was on leave. He did an excellent job as the acting fire marshal and really appreciate their confidence in him. So, thank you.
Thanks, and glad to have you back, glad you're feeling better.
Thank you.
All right. Kara, anything from the community engagement area this evening?
Hello, I have just one quick announcement to make, mostly for our residents to let them know that quarterly newsletter is just about done and ready to head to print this week, and then mail later this week, hopefully. So I'd like residents just to keep an eye out for their newsletters coming in mailboxes probably next week. We normally would send our winter newsletter in December, however, we wanted to make sure that we could communicate with residents about the new precinct locations. So there's gonna be a map in there as well as some information that'll be an insert inside the newsletter. We've also got some information about the master land use plan, how residents can get involved with that process, both in-person and online. We've got a person, in-person meeting coming up. We've got kind of a cheat sheet for how to call city hall now that we have our new phone systems, because I know there's been some confusion exactly which extension to hit to make sure that you get the right department. We have also got a great new calendar feature, so there's gonna be a little tear-off with upcoming events. I know people have really missed that and the fact that we don't produce the print calendars anymore, so that will be coming back. So again, that should be hitting mailboxes hopefully next week, going to print this week, and everybody be on the lookout for it.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you. Lloyd, anything from DPW this evening? Nothing tonight, wow, okay. Marnie, anything from the city clerk's office?
Yes, as Kara mentioned, we are publicizing our precinct changes that were made at the December 14th meeting. New voter ID cards are being sent to all voters in the city of Ferndale, notifying them of their new polling locations and precinct numbers. And those are coming soon. We have our AV applications out for the March 8th presidential primary, which is the first election that people will be voting in their new precincts. On this AV application, it's a little different this time, you have to select whether you would like a Democratic or Republican ballot. So if you are requesting an AV ballot, just keep an eye out that you'll need to make a choice when you send back the card before-
I can't vote straight ticket, I'm kidding.
And that is my other thing that I wanted to mention, was that the, another piece of legislation that passed near the end of the year was the elimination of straight-party voting, which is a real hit to the benefit I was hoping to gain from increasing the precincts. So this will make voting take more time. All we can suggest is that people try to educate themselves on the proposals and candidates to the best of their ability prior to coming to the precincts. And to the best of our ability, we'll give you the information that we can.
I know you will. Thank you. April, anything from the city manager's office?
Sure, I just want to offer a friendly reminder that the city hall is closed on Monday, January 18th, an observance for Martin's-
They're king. Do you know the date of that MLUP meeting and location?
Yes, Public Workshop, Saturday, February 6th at the Rust Belt Market.
So February 6th at the Rust Belt Market is a date that you'll want to keep-
In your calendars and the community as well for-
At what time?
It is going to start at-
11:00. 11:00 to 3:00. We, it's an open house type of event, so we really encourage as many people as possible to come in and talk about the future and what they, what they want to see Ferndale look like in the next five, 10 years. We'll be, again, that will be in the calendar, but we'll start really promoting that date as well as we move forward with that event. That's all I have today.
Excellent. Dan, anything from the-
Just one item. Earlier this evening, council approved amending the purchase agreement regarding 1741 Libranoya, the sale of the American Legion Building. That closing should take place later this week.
Excellent, thank you. Dan, Councilman Martin?
No, just again, my thanks and it's with a lot of humility, I thank the voters of Ferndale and the privilege to serve with this council for the next four years. You guys are, the staff and council are fantastic, and it's really been a positive experience, and I can't wait for four more. Lloyd, I just want to say, first snowfall of the year, we embarrassed the cities around us again because we got out there and cleaned up before anybody else, and I'm sure tomorrow morning it'll be the same. But you guys did a fantastic job, so please pass our compliments on your staff. Thanks.
Thanks. Councilwoman Leaks May? Anything for the good of the community this evening?
Well, I will echo Councilman Martin's. I want to thank you for allowing me this opportunity and looking forward to the next four years. And a personal note, I made it through the first one.
All right. Councilman Polika?
Just want to congratulate Councilwoman Leaks May for making it through her first meeting.
Thank you.
And I'm glad that I'm gonna be able to continue work with you, Mayor, and Councilman Martin. I want to congratulate Captain Pelazolo on his new appointment and looking forward to some great things coming out of the police department. And the last thing is, this wonderful gentleman did bring it up and call the audience, but I wanted to bring it up, was the handicap parking space fees. I'd like us to relook at that. I don't think that we're making a great amount of money by charging handicap people for parking. So I'd like us to revisit that, if we could.
I don't, I don't disagree. Can we at least put it on for discussion?
Sure.
Yeah, we could have, perhaps Joe make a statement for us, thanks.
Or a recommendation?
Recommendation, yeah.
I'd look for a recommendation.
Sure.
All right. Mayor Protem, Piana?
Well, I'm very happy and to pile on all of the joy of having you guys continue to serve Mayor and Councilman Martin, but also Ray Long Leaks May. You certainly fought hard to earn this seat and earned the trust of the voters. And so I know that you'll earn the trust and can maintain that trust over the next four years and do some hard work. Because we all are very productive, and I'm very proud to serve with all of you. I'm just amazed at what we get accomplished. I'm not sure the city staff always appreciate it, but-
We didn't ask how they voted.
We're a good team overall, and I'm proud to serve amongst all of you. I really don't have any other comments tonight, and just happy to be here and serve again for two more years on mine.
Great. I would just, once again, Sam, I'm looking forward to a very productive term. We got a lot, we've got a lot of issues to tackle and things to do, but I think this is the right council, the right staff, the right community partners, and I think we're poised to do some really great things in Ferndale. So I look forward to our next term. Thanks, everybody, and meeting is adjourned.